Would you like to lead us in the pledge? Would you like to lead us in the pledge? We got my thirty. Thank you, sir. Broca?
Jenny David. Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie here. Brenda Simmons. Frank Scott.
Uh, approval of agenda, any additions or corrections, commissioners? Want to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented, support.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltie, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries declaration of conflicts of interest, are there any commissioners?
I have none, I have none.
Commissioner Simmons, is there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Review of minutes, August eighth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed the minutes. Motion, we accept them.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltie?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Scott, any further discussion?
Yes. Consent agenda, third, third motion down. About the adopt the special millage question for authorization of animal control and shelter services. I did not make the motion. I went back and reviewed it on YouTube and you made the motion and, and Brenda seconded it, so.
Yeah.
That can just be.
Which one was that on, please?
The animal control.
But what?
Consent agenda, it's the third, third paragraph down. For the meeting minutes for August eighth, twenty twenty four. It's funding for the animal control. Yeah, it is. Any other additions or corrections? We have a motion with support to approve with changes. Yes, Commissioner Wiltie?
That's correct.
I support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, four B, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, public comment and agenda item matters.
What about the thirteenth?
Pardon me?
Did you already?
Yep, I just did that.
I said the eighth.
We did that one and we did the thirteenth.
Okay, sorry, misunderstood.
That's okay, any public comment and agenda items in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Uh, correspondence, I don't think we've seen any correspondence, correct? We did, I didn't see him. Uh, item seven, public hearing, multi-county materials management plan agreement. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide an opportunity for citizens to provide input on the multi-county materials management plan agreement. Agenda item eight, public comment about the proposed agreement will be heard as required under section five A of the Urban Corporation Act, established rules for public comment will apply. Can we move to go into a public hearing or can we just declare that we're going into?
You can declare.
Any comments on the public hearing for multi-county materials management plan agreement? In the room? Commissioners, do you have any comments?
No, I don't, I don't have any.
Any public comment on the phone?
Need a motion to close.
Any public comment on the phone related to this?
We need a motion to close the public hearing, can we just close it?
I have a question, what does this commit us to?
I'm sorry?
What does this agreement commit us to?
This is the agreement that puts us into the group of seven other counties to develop the material management plan. And this will be probably a three-year process, it will be funded through grants from the state. And what we'll do is be able to pool our resources with these other seven counties to actually develop the plan. Uh, I think we'll have more likelihood of success when it comes to implementation with the help of the other partners.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we just close the public hearing?
You can declare it closed, yeah.
Uh, item eight, a consent agenda resolution to enter in an agreement to establish and manage a multi-county materials management plan. Uh, this resolution is sponsored by administrator slash controller Timothy Davahani. Under provisions of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy has determined that each county in Michigan must complete a materials management plan. The planning area of a single plan may include two or more counties if properly approved by the respective legislative bodies of each county. The Michigan Constitution permits counties to exercise joint with another county any power, privilege, or authority which they share and which each might lawfully exercise separately. The counties of Clare, Gladwin, Grasha, Isabella, Acosta, Midland, Ogma, and Asiola wish to enter into an agreement to provide for and effectuate the process of a multi-county materials management plan consistent with the terms of proposed agreement. Approval of the resolution will also satisfy the notice of intent requirement by August thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline established by the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution to enter an agreement to establish and manage the multi-county materials management plan. Support.
Motion by Commissioner Wiltie, support from Commissioner Scott, discussion, Commissioner Simmons, do you have any further questions on it? What was the deadline on this, what was the term agreement?
This is August thirty first deadline from the state, all counties, we actually had until July sixth, but we got an extension.
Right.
This agreement was being developed. And the state said we could take until August thirty first to commit.
But is there a deadline, I see that, I guess I asked deadline, but I meant like, um, what's the term on this agreement?
It'll be three years, and that's the, the funding formula the states come up with so far. So a three-year process, um, we could potentially be finished with our plan sooner, but, um, you know, given the number of counties and the meeting schedule rotating among these counties, I think probably will take all three.
Any further discussion?
I have not.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, new business. Um. Nine, a resolution to proclaim Constitution Week in Ogma County. This resolution is sponsored by the Daughters of the American Revolution. A tradition of celebrating the United States Constitution was started many years ago by the Daughters of the American Resolution. In nineteen fifty-five, the Daughters petitioned Congress to set aside September seventeenth through the twenty-third annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The aims of the celebration are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, preserving it for prosperity, informing the people that the Constitution is the basis for the Americans' great heritage and the foundation of our way of life, and encourage the study of historical events which led to the framing of the Constitution in September seventeen eighty-seven. Approval of the resolution will proclaim September seventeenth through September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, as the Constitution Week in Ogma County.
I'll make motions to accept the resolution to proclaim that one.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott? I'll support that. Any, just any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, item nine B, resolution to enter in agreement for housing of Ogma County inmates. This resolution is sponsored by the Law Enforcement Committee. Michigan statute requires that each organized county jail at its own cost and expense, provided the county see a suitable and sufficient jail and keep same and good repair. In lieu of providing a jail, each county may contract with, with other counties for the use of such county's jail. Financial challenges facing Ogma County in fiscal year twenty twenty-five are well documented. However, Ogma County is obligated to provide adequate funding to the sheriff to operate or contract for a jail or lockup. Roscommon County has determined that by inmate population daily averages, Roscommon County Jail has available space for housing those prisoners committed to the care and custody of the Ogma County Sheriff. Approval of the resolution will authorize an agreement with Roscommon County for housing Ogma County inmates, subject to agreement by the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners.
Move to accept the resolution. Support.
Motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltie, discussion. Tim, go ahead.
If you don't mind, I'd like to walk you through the document, it's, it's been relatively, like, the last couple of days, it's different ice of, uh, based on it. And I do want to emphasize, it's not usual that this resolution be adopted tonight. Um, you don't have to work through the system that Roscommon County for their approval as well. Our primary contact has been out of the office, will be back on Monday, so we don't have their direct feedback. The document that I put in front of you tonight, um, it kind of mirrors what's on your iPad, but yeah, this is the actual working documents. You can actually see what's been struck out, what's been added, and there are a few things that have been added, um, you're just as soon after you're mailed by our attorney. Um, document. And tonight, I think we've captured what we discussed in our meeting with Roscommon County on August ninth. I believe that's all been captured in here. Uh, but obviously Roscommon County needs to look at it too to make sure that we have captured everything and that their understanding is that some of ours. We've also attempted to take this document that was the draft that Roscommon had developed and take the components of the original draft that we have proposed and make sure that they're all included. Again, I think we've done that and with the help of our attorney, um, actually worked on the language a little bit so that it made a little bit more sense, but I actually had the points that he had. You want to just walk through, you know, what has changed since this was originally discussed? Usually put out on iPads, and if it changes on page two, the pages I'm going to go over are the ones that are highlighted in yellow. Um, and those are language changes since we talked last week. And the first one is a clarification on the, on the term of the agreement and termination, and our attorney suggested what you've got highlighted in, in yellow, that either Roscommon or Ogma can terminate this agreement at any time with or without clause by delivery of not less than thirty days prior notice to the other party. Um, the, the former language was just by mutual consent, this sort of locks it down a little bit more, it is with or without clause, it is in writing. Uh, just the preferred language of our council. Uh, number four was, um, in fact, I talked to the chair about this a little bit earlier today about the rate. The intention and Commissioners Wiltie and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but the intention that we'd, uh, come to conclude, on August ninth was that we were paying for the beds we used. Right?
I understand.
Uh, and the language that was in the contract, um, was a little fuzzy, I guess we'll say that. And the prosecutor actually provided the language that you see in yellow. Uh, for a fee of thirty-five and no dollars per day per bed physically occupied by Ogma inmates will be charged. It's understood that Ogma County will not be charged for any reserved unused beds if the number of Ogma inmates decreases by per day. And that's a safeguard, I think, that we all had agreed on, uh, going into the August ninth negotiation as well. They said that we didn't want to pay for something we weren't using. But at the same time, Roscommon is only committing to the thirty-five if they, uh, don't have enough room for inmate number thirty-six and we happen to have thirty-six. We'll have to find another place, uh, to place that inmate. Uh, since we've, um, had our meeting on August ninth, I did contact Clare County and they are more than willing to take our inmates at the same rate. And I also had a call from Gladwin County, um, late last week saying that they also might have, uh, space available. But that's also getting to the point that we've talked about that more and more, uh, our local jails are having uh, whether populations are down and they have room and, uh, it's to our advantage in this case, so that if we do go higher than thirty-five and Roscommon doesn't have room, we do have a place to go. Big screen, um, six. We didn't specifically talk about juvenile inmates, but we don't incarcerate juveniles in our facility anyway. Uh, our attorney just felt that that was important to make sure that that's understood. Um, number seven, and this is another one I believe we discussed, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, but we, um, aren't planning on going to Roscommon to pick up inmates who are unable to find transportation from the jail. Now, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I think we actually did discuss that just briefly about what happens when they're released.
On meeting on the ninth, we discussed that and that it would be up to the inmate would have to find transportation.
Right, so, you know, make sure that that's, by striking that from the agreement. And then the medical appointments and returns we've outlined that in section thirteen, and it's just a reference to all the reader to the.
I have a question to ask, I'm thirteen. Let me interrupt. It said Roscommon's content, unless otherwise provided here in Ogma County shall reimburse Roscommon County up to forty percent of the inmates.
We're done.
In facility medical, that's where we are.
Did he get to thirteen already? I thought, kind of mighty high? I'm still on three, okay. Hold on.
Did you get to the healthcare?
We're, we're just about two.
Yeah. He's on page four, just turning to page four.
All right. Then I must have missed something back here.
Yeah, it was just a reference to thirteen, but now we're at thirteen, uh, in, in, uh.
I heard the number thirteen, so I assumed you were at thirteen.
So, um, and, and you were gonna, that's ahead of where I was, so this is the, uh, forty percent of the infacity medical care contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
And my understanding is here, and I wish the sheriff, there is, Tom's here. Okay, good. Tom, my understanding is that we have a contract for medical care in the jail, is that correct? Does Ascoata County pay for any part of that?
I don't believe so.
Oh, they don't.
No, they don't, so why are we?
Um, this is what Roscommon proposed, their contract is ninety thousand, forty percent of that is thirty-six thousand. We were scheduled, if we were to proceed with a twenty-four seven operation, we budgeted a hundred ninety-one thousand for that same service in our facility. Uh, as we were discussing this with Roscommon on, uh, August ninth, that thirty-six thousand was acceptable, it was a.
But I figure the cost of keeping there was part of all that. Because they'd had to pay that, that fee for the, um, for the medical, if we were there, we weren't there.
Right. But we're saying we would like to be there, and we are, um, increasing their population by about double as well, I mean, we're doubling what they have in the facility and they just asked for that.
Cause I mean, that's a valid question, it, it really truly is, and I don't disagree, you know, that's something we may have been able to get out of in the past. Um, Ascoata County, and we, we, we didn't ask it. But you have a, that is doubling their population, is that going to require more healthcare, is?
But the price of the healthcare won't be going up. It'll stay the same, because they have a contract for inmates in, in, in-house. If they go to a hospital, totally different thing.
No, I.
They go to a dentist, a totally different thing, this is, this does not apply.
I'm, I understand that. We're talking about in-house.
Right.
So we don't know currently what their hours are now. When we went into this new contract, we did have them add on, uh, we agreed to so many extra hours per week, I, I don't recall exactly how much it was, but I think, I want to say six hours, for some reason, that's ringing a bell. But we did okay extra hours for nursing care in our jail, I mean, this, this obviously is a lot more responsibility, when you double a population, it, it's a lot. I understand you have a valid point, we didn't, we, we didn't charge that, why are they charging that?
They're going to pay that, if we go there, we don't go there.
But this is going to be extra services that they're going to have to provide, is one individual.
A lot of money.
Is, are they going to have to add extra staff with doubling the population that they're serving? Are they going to have to give more hours? I don't have that answer.
Do we have to do that?
I just said we did, we gave that, the nursing staff like six extra hours or whatever it was, I don't recall.
Oh, you said hours, I thought you meant personnel.
Either or, I, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what they do up there.
I'm just asking.
Got it.
Go ahead.
And I don't know the forty percent is, how much money is that?
Okay, Commissioner Scott?
You know that perfect.
Commissioner Simmons? Commissioner Scott?
Well, I'm, I'm just understanding when an Ascoata inmate gets care, we bill their county for his care.
No.
Where they go, no, no, only if they go to a hospital or a dentist or something like that.
Jeez, I thought they were, I thought we were billing them.
No.
No.
If they, if they took up aspirin, I thought we were billing for it.
Nope.
Hold on, hold on, now we do get when it's a prescription, because when we do claims, you do see that, and they do separate Ogma County versus Ascoata. That's not, we don't know what care all they're, they're getting, but no, when they require care in-house, we don't see a bill for that. We only see a bill when they go external or when they get a prescription.
We weren't paying twice the amount of money that Roscommon pays.
Yes.
And we weren't getting any recouped on any of that?
No.
I thought we were.
She's got a valid point. A very valid point. But we meant, we.
We should have been billing for that.
Our in-house medical for two thousand and twenty-five, if we would stay as is, be a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. How do you know that?
Well, that may be a valid question for Roscommon County is, you know, why do you want forty percent, like, is it going to require extra hours, extra service?
I would have to say logically it should, I mean, they're literally doubling the number of.
My concern was what the forty percent was.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollars. And it's not a hundred ninety thousand like we're paying now.
Correct.
And I understand that now, but I did not want, I have no idea what forty percent is.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, further down on, uh, section thirteen, just to clean up on the, um, emergency, um, off-site medical care, we, um, down in this agreement that Roscommon County would provide the trans, would provide staffing if, uh, there were a need for off-site care for less than four hours, if it's more than four hours, Ogma would be responsible. The, uh, language here has just changed to include transportation and staffing, the previous proposal just said staffing, so this, just again, clarifying, it's, it's the whole package. Um, page six, uh, very minor, uh, items, but the first two paragraphs of section seventeen, just adding the words extent, uh, allowed by law. This is always been sort of a confusing section to me when it comes to particularly indemnification, there are certain rules when it comes to public, uh, bodies, whether they can indemnify each other or not. This language covers it, if it's allowed, then yes, if not, by the way, it's not allowed. And then, um, in that third paragraph, a sentence inserted in the middle, nothing here, and shall abrogate the parties' right to assert governmental immunity as an offense. The other change on page eight, number twenty-six, just clarifies that any amendments to the agreement would be in writing and signed by both parties to the agreement, that's pretty common language. And then the last change that's been added, uh, current graph was set out was, uh, section twenty-eight on page nine. For anybody in this case, we would have our board chairs, uh, sign the contract there, uh, stating by signing that they're the ones fully authorized to do so, and certainly the case in Ogma County. Um, I can't speak to Roscommon, but I would be surprised if it's any different. But those are the changes, and like I said, it's not imperative that you this resolution tonight, so long as we agree that this is the language that we, uh, want to agree with, uh, at Roscommon. Uh, and we can certainly wait for Roscommon County to adopt it first, but we do, if, if that's your wish, uh, to me, it doesn't really matter, it's six and one half dozen the other, who adopts it first?
I, I got two, I guess, comments are concerned, the first one is, as I did, I, uh, I got a phone call, uh, last night from Commissioner Simmons. Um, after she had had an opportunity to review this with definitely some, some questions. So I did reach out to you this morning and, and specifically that number four, um, the verbiage did seem very confusing to me, and, and after seeing all these changes, after your app, when you and I spoke, you felt it was still pretty clear with, with how it was stated in there, but, but now all of these changes, so I guess before we, this resolution was put on our iPad, did our legal team look at this and agree with all of, this is a lot of changes that occurred today?
Yeah, and this is part of our, our legal teams review and the prosecuting attorney, I need to give credit to for the language on four to clarify, you know, exactly what we are, who we're paying for and when. But yes, and the, the attorney also gave us that original draft that we went into the meeting on August ninth with, and we explained to Roscommon that we would have our attorney look at this and make sure that the elements he felt were important, uh, were included in this draft, because this is the draft they started with. So that's what we concluded with today, uh, and the majority of the changes you see here, and you can see that they're relatively minor, uh, but important.
They are, but they're not, I mean, these are a lot of changes that if all of this conversation wouldn't have taken place today, these changes wouldn't have been made. Um, to me, that's, that's pretty concerning, especially with the, the big question was that we're going to be charged thirty-five, thirty-five dollars per day for thirty-five inmates, no matter what number we have in there, um, I mean, there's a lot of changes made throughout this. So that makes me a little uneasy, um, I agree the verbiage, I'm, I'm not done. I agree the verbiage is, was, is much better and much clearer here. My other comment is I know, um, I'm not comfortable making a, uh, I personally would like to table this at this point in time. And the reason, I'm going to state, this is my rationale and, and, and then I'll give everybody an opportunity, is because if Roscommon hasn't had an opportunity to look at this and agree with this, we're just going to end up bringing this back and going over and over and over this. Um, I feel like this is, was a decent start. Um, and I feel like all of these changes that have been made in the last couple of hours is alarming. Enough to where I think this is going to require some, some more time, Commissioner Scott?
I see most of these changes being, uh, so superficial, being, uh, just wording, uh, set, I mean, just, just, uh, cleaning up, uh, our, our, it's our, uh, attorneys. Because their attorney has already booked this over. So one attorney likes it written this way, our attorney likes it written this way. No attorney, there is no one train of thought for every attorney in the United States that writes everything the same way. They all look at it differently. So you take number three there, it's just a couple of words difference. And they put Ascoata and Roscommon in, in, in the same place. In the same sentence, but in a different place in the sentence. I don't see any, I really see anything that's so big there. Um, when you, when you look at some of these other paragraphs, you know, medical appointments and return hospitalization as set forth in section thirteen, that's all, that's all the differences, as set forth in thirteen. Uh, they put in, won't house juvenile inmates, neither jail does already. But it's just a, just a sentence they put in, because they would just wanted us to be covered. Um, uh, you know, they, they crossed out inmates released and, uh, and unable to, uh, obtain transport. Well, even our jail, I said that they just, they're done, they go, they leave. Um, they had served their time and they left. Couple, a couple of lines drawn through, um, most, most, and to the extent allowed by law for those two, two paragraphs, I mean, these are just small little things, I know that you turn the page and it's yellow. But it's not, I think you're overcomplicating it.
Hold on.
That's all.
Commissioner Wiltie, do you have anything?
Um, I mean, the magnitude of this is huge, and I want you guys to feel comfortable with the agreement. The contract, um, you know, we needed a few things changed, changing them, so. Jody, uh, the Roscommon Administrator, Tim will be back on Monday.
Right.
So I have no problem tableing this.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wiltie, or geez, sorry, Commissioner Simmons?
The significant sum is could have been very costly to us if the change wasn't made. Because they said in paragraph four, that they were going to reserve thirty-five beds. And we paid thirty-five dollars a day for thirty-five beds. No matter what the, what the inmate fluctuated to, so if we had twenty-three people in there, we'd be still paying for thirty-five beds. That's what that paragraph said. And that went before a lawyer, and I let five or six other people read the same paragraph and they, they interpreted it the same way I did. And that is pretty doggone significant, as far as dollars and cents go.
Commissioner, Commissioner Mahew, anything?
No.
I like, I, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to table this at this point in time until Roscommon has an opportunity, um, to, uh, talk about it or, and look at it.
I have one question.
Have a motion on the table, would anybody like to support it?
Yeah.
Commissioner, now it's time for discussion.
I didn't know there was a motion. You make them so fast, they just slide right on by. So, but if Roscommon agrees to this, uh, my main concern was paragraph four. That was my biggest concern, and also my other concern was paragraph thirteen about forty percent. I know what the extra dollars are for that now, did not, and that's significant savings. But paragraph four was was really important to me, because I didn't want to pay for thirty-five beds, we only had twenty-three inmates up there. So if they agree to this. So if they agree to this, you, you, what do you think about this as it's written now with the corrections that's made in it?
I don't think it makes any sense of proving something at this point in time when the other party hasn't looked at it.
I understand that.
Okay, hold on, I wasn't finished. When the other party hasn't had an opportunity to look at it. Um, it, the reason being is because then we're going to continue to go back and forth. Um, I would much rather have their approval and then we can make a decision from there. Is this verbiage that I looked at this afternoon that's been changed much clearer? Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
So I didn't say I agree with it. I said it's much clearer. And this is a pretty long, lengthy contract. I mean, we need to make sure that all parties understand what it say and are, are agreeable. This is a five-year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven. So this is a big deal.
Three years.
So I, there's a motion on the floor with, uh, support and for the discussion.
And the motion is what, please, would you please?
Table this.
Until we get a report back from Roscommon.
At this point in time to table this.
What I want, table it for eternity.
To the committee of the whole meeting?
To, it will be further discussed at committee of the whole.
Has to be.
And then we'll go from there.
Exactly.
Right, the board rules that have it taken up again at our next regular meeting, yes, in the form of a resolution, but I certainly believe.
And then we make a motion to take it off the table. So there's a motion with support. Roll call vote. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Craig Scott. Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item nine C, discussion regarding board communication with news media. Um, I actually asked, I talked to Tim and asked, uh, for this to be put on. I thought we had a policy. Um, in the past, written for this. Apparently we don't. It's been discussed a few times, but there's been no, no policy that, that, uh, Tim could find. I asked this after our previous meeting when the only just things kind of, in my opinion, a lot of assumptions were made after our last meeting. Uh, we and committee of the whole, we made a decision to not put something, a millage on a ballot to support the jail. Um, that did not get support and now that escalated to the jail closing. Has there been talks with, uh, Roscommon? Yes. Is there a contract? Yes. Has any decision been made? No, the news media was, um, we were on channel twelve the following night. Um, it was a, a, uh, broadcast that was made and things have escalated from there. Um, my concern is from a liability perspective, what uh, uh, what liability that puts us at with various commissioners talking to the media. Um, I have been contacted a few different times. I either direct them to Tim specifically, our legal team, um, or I just don't return the phone call. So I guess I want to know, obviously there's some hot topics right now. Um, I don't want any of us, including the county, getting any type of, uh, legal problems. Is, is, how do you guys feel about forming a policy on this? I feel that's what our legal team is there for and that's what Tim is there for. Commissioner Simmons.
I think there should be a policy on that because there's five of us. We could all say something a little bit differently. And it could be interpreted differently. So I think it comes from one, one head. We're a lot safer and a lot less liable to get into trouble.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Commissioner Scott.
How far does this go? What, is it just news media? Doug's sitting right here. He's called me before. I can't talk to him. Is that what you're saying? I can't talk to him if he calls me?
I'm asking for a policy to be drafted.
Well, he's news media.
I wasn't done.
Well, I wasn't done. I had the floor. You jumped in.
I apologize.
Now, who's got the floor?
Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
He's the news media. If he calls me, am I allowed under your policy to talk to him? If, if, if I get a question at a township meeting, am I supposed to say, well, hey, I can't give you an answer? Because I got to refer you to the administrator or to the chair. And where do we go with this? I, I sit in the bakery in the morning. If somebody's got a question for me about county business because they watch me on YouTube. Oh, hey, I'm sorry, I can't give you that answer. You have to call the administrator and ask him. Yeah, are we going to go that far? Are you restricting my First Amendment rights? Saying that I got a, a, a I got the freedom of speech? Yes, I agree with you. If there's five of us, then we could have five different opinions, but that's exactly what we got. Five different opinions.
It wasn't the bakery.
Commissioner Simmons, no.
We've heard this, we've heard this thing, we've heard this over and over again, the jail closing, but I, I, I mentioned, I said in the last meeting, state law says we can't close the jail. So the jail will not close. So if you say it's going to close, that's a false statement. Now, is that the kind of statement you want to make to the news media? A false statement? Or do you want to say an accurate statement? I was on the TV. What I said was accurate. They, they said she said tensions are, uh, there, there's tensions. I said, yeah, I agree with you. There's tensions. I said that, uh, our budget's in bad shape. I said we didn't have a fund balance and haven't had one. That's accurate. I said, nobody wants to lay anybody off. I, I think that's pretty accurate. Unless one of you want to lay somebody off, I don't think you do. I, what I said was accurate. I don't know. Are you mad because the man said, well, Craig Scott was right when he said it? I, I, I don't know how far you want to go. Can't talk to TV, but we can talk to the newspaper? Or we can't talk to a newspaper from out of town, but we can talk to the one in town? I can't talk to, I can't answer a meeting, uh, of people's comments at township meetings or any place? Where do you want to take it? How far are you going to go? I'm done.
Commissioner Wilson.
Um, I mean, I see from, from your point, I, I obviously don't want things to get all Willy Wonka'd and one person saying one thing, one person saying the other. I think Commissioner Scott brings up a lot of valid points. It seems like this could be a, a situation where, uh, you know, it really could be kind of hard to decipher what's right, what's wrong. I'd like to refer to Tim and his years of experience with this. Tim, what have you done in the past? Have you had these type of situations where you've asked for commissioners have asked for this type of actions? And, and if you have, what have, what have you seen from it?
Yeah, I, I seen both, uh, both approaches, uh, one like ours where there really was nothing mentioned. And then one that, then your public comments are directed to, and there's in the board rules, just a statement that said this is where you direct it. Usually it's the administrator. It has been the administrator and or board chair and spokesperson of the board. But you do have a very fine needle to thread here. Commissioner Scott's right. There, there is a First Amendment issue. Um, in fact, maybe our attorney is prepared to talk about that a little bit tonight and just exactly how you do that. Uh, but at the same time, it's good, I think, to have a, a policy that just says, you know, I think helps the media. If you need an official comment, go to, fill in the blank. Uh, that doesn't necessarily prohibit anybody else from talking, but you know, when you get it in your board rules, um, you know, I, I think it just memorializes it so that when you are called, you can say, okay, is this a situation where I should or I shouldn't? Uh, you know, again, uh, in recognition of the First Amendment right. So again, it's a fine needle to thread, but answer your question, I've seen it both ways. It has worked well, uh, where it is in the, uh, board rules. And, and again, just because it helps direct people to, okay, here's why I need to call and then not have to worry about getting, you know, somebody into trouble later on. But entirely your call as a board, you know, whatever you're comfortable with.
Don, do you have anything to add to that? You're muted if you're trying to talk.
What about me?
There he goes.
Hi there.
Hi, did you hear the question?
Yes, I think so. It looks like the video is still up, but that's okay. Uh, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I've had some technical problems in my end. So if you had asked me a question in the first fifteen minutes or so, I was still working through some technical, um, issues on my end and yeah, um, you know, I think what we've seen in the past that does seem to work when this issue comes up is if members of the Board of Commissioners directs media questions and, and I think typically the issue comes up with media questions to the county administrator. The county administrators, uh, skilled in answering, and all county administrators are typically skilled in answering questions that come up from the media in a way that protects the county. Um, and preserves the positions of the county so that the, you know, so that the board has options going forward. And, um, so that's typically, that's, that's typically the way we've seen this kind of thing handled in the past. Um, it could be preserved to that, what I just said, in a policy, or it could be something that's added perhaps to your board rules. So we can, we can look at doing that if you'd like. And I'm, you know, happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions for Don, commissioners? Commissioner Simmons?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
I think when, when it comes to news media and be a newspaper or the radio or TV, it should go through the county administrator. Because I mean, that's being broadcast all over. And I would like to have one talking mouth, not five talking mouths.
Any for the.
I didn't say you can't, excuse me, I didn't say you can't talk to people at the bakery. I didn't say you can't talk to people at the laundry van. I'm just saying, when it comes to news media and being interviewed, it should be the county administrator. And that way we get to make the same message across instead of five messages. We could get into trouble.
Any questions for Don? Commissioners?
No question.
Let me clear one thing up. Once Mr. Camp from Flint or Channel Twelve called me, I called Tim and told him I got a call from Terry Camp and he said he just got off the phone with him. And I said he wants to interview me. And, uh, I just said, I'm just going to tell him accurate statements. That's it. I mean, I talked to the man for fifteen minutes on camera, but what, what was I there? A total of twelve seconds or something? Thirty seconds at the most. You know, I mean, you talked to him for a half an hour or so and what, you were on there twice as long as me. You know, I mean, I, 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 it's such a, it's even the paper. We've, we've talked about this with the paper is they can't print the whole meeting in the paper. So you can't take, you can't take the context of, of just an article and, and know everything that goes on. You know, that's why I hope people watches YouTube. They can see the whole thing. They can see the context we're talking and, and everything. I checked with Tim. And I would continue to do that.
I, I, you make a valid point. And to me, that's, that's what is alarming is that you can do a fifteen minute interview and only brief things can be taken out of it. Um, and it can be taken out of context. And again, my only reasoning for doing this is to protect the county from any type of liability or us individually. I'm in favor of, again, of directing the media specifically and only the media to our county administrator for interviews. As far as what is taken off of, I mean, these are, these are public meetings. Anything can obviously be taken off of them. But as far as the media itself, I'm in, I'm in favor of something that protects us uh, and the county as a whole. So other thoughts? Commissioner Wilson, do you have a thought?
Um, no, I mean, this was good conversation. Um, I think probably moving forward, I, I'll agree with you and Commissioner Simmons, um, regarding media, whether it be paper, radio, news, news channels. I'd, I'd rather take that off my shoulders anyways and just have them go to our administrator. I have no problem with that.
Can we draft a policy? I think.
Yeah, I'll work with, I, I would suggest that if you have board rules as opposed to a standalone policy, because it really is talking about you. I think that'd be an appropriate place for it.
Claims. Uh, Commissioner Wilson and I looked over claims. They totaled two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. I'll make a motion to approve claims.
I'll support.
Uh, discussion. Commissioner Wilson, I think, what do we see on there? We see the medical examiner three month, uh, which was quite a bit.
Yeah.
We've seen the election reimbursement for the election, which is going to be reimbursed.
Yeah.
We've seen some trainings on there. We've seen some lights for some jet skis, I think.
Yeah, I haven't got that answer yet, but I'll look into that more for labor for jet skis.
Um, what else do we see on there? See anything else that really stuck out? Did you, Tim?
No, I didn't.
Oh, there was a, a puppies, a group of puppies that were brought in.
Earlier before retirement.
Yes, through animal control, which was quite a large bill, twelve hundred dollars and a hundred and thirty-three dollars and four hundred and two dollars um, for that. That was quite a, quite a bit. But it, there was a, um, right on the statement itself, there was explanation, which was helpful. Any further questions about claims? Roll call vote. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Uh, unfinished business, commissioners? Uh, Administrator slash Controller report.
We've got the written report on the iPads. I do have, uh, a couple of topics here. I need a little bit of direction from you. Um, the time is, uh, running out on our fiscal twenty-five budget and just some of the changes that we have incorporated will require certain notices to go out in, in a timely basis. For instance, uh, the direction we're headed with the jail. Uh, we do have a contract with Osco to County that would require a thirty-day notice of our intention. That unfortunately will happen between now and your next meeting. And what I'd like you to, to tell me if you'd like something else different to happen, but for all these notices, uh, come up, then I will just proceed to issue those notices. Uh, we can, uh, put a caveat in there saying we, we're sending you this notice per contract. However, if the board changes its mind in the next thirty days, we'll reconsider. But, uh, the thirty-day thing, uh, we wait until, say, September twenty-sixth, when we actually move to adopt the budget. That's going to be an issue because then we're into, well into October, well into the next fiscal year before the notice would take us next.
Right, Commissioners.
I have a comment. At, at our last meeting, um, my understanding is you said closing the jail. Um, because we were talking about putting a millage on and stuff, would be like nine hundred thousand dollars. I mean, I wasn't the only one that heard that. Is that a true statement?
I'm not following the question.
If we close the jail, it was said last meeting that we would save nine hundred thousand dollars. I was not the only one that heard you say that.
I think the number I used was four hundred thousand.
No, it's nine hundred thousand.
Commissioner Simmons.
That's the case that I would have misspoken. Uh, the budget that you've been given, there is a total that shows you that surplus at the end. So that's the revenues over expenses. And with this plan with the jail, the overall savings was, I've been saying the neighborhood of four hundred fifty thousand. I don't have it in front of me. Uh, but that's helping to build that fund balance that we've discussed uh, over the well, over the course of the entire budget process. Uh, so that's, that's the number I'm working from. That's again roughly four hundred fifty thousand.
Comment.
Commissioner Wilson.
Um, as Chair of the Budget Committee, Commissioner Simmons. Uh, Tim, what day was roughly, or maybe Commissioner Simmons, you could tell me, when we had the budget meeting where you laid out the carpet for us? That was, that was how long ago? Six weeks? Eight weeks ago?
I have to go to my calendar.
Okay, well, anyways, it was a while ago. We've had some meetings since. July twelfth is the number I just heard, which that sounds about right. No, no time at all ever during these budget meetings was there ever a nine hundred thousand dollar
That's correct.
mark stated. It was very clear that we were surprised by the lack of savings, but that four hundred thousand dollar mark was stated on that first meeting, that first budget meeting. We read it. We had it in front of us. So I, I guess I'm confused why you seem so disappointed that you thought we were going to save nine hundred thousand dollars. I respond to that?
Please.
I didn't, I didn't think it. I heard the administrator say that and I was not the only one. And my understanding was also, just like yours, was four hundred thousand. And we were talking about a millage and I was probably ready to put that millage on, but when he said nine hundred thousand, because I'd already talked to the townships about it too. They thought it might be a good idea to put a millage on. And then when I talked to him after the meeting, I said, man, he said nine hundred thousand. He said, yeah, I know. I said, well, I'm not willing to sacrifice nine hundred thousand dollars. That's why I changed that. Because that's what was said last meeting. Go and look at, look at the recordings. It was said, last meeting, nine hundred thousand. And I was not the only one that heard that.
Last meeting, nine hundred thousand, and I was not the only one that heard that.
Where are you getting the, the numbers that you're looking at? And they just pulled up the, uh, board packet from last meeting.
I got it from what was said by our county administrator last meeting. That's where I got those numbers from, and I wasn't the only one that got them.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Where you came up with that nine hundred, where the discussion was at Committee of the Whole last week was under the board packet. We were looking at the bottom numbers for the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-five general fund budget draft. For the different scenarios. Uh, we were looking at those numbers talking out loud, and that's what we asked for specifically, cause we're, I'm not part of the, um. Uh, the committee for, um, the budget committee. So I wanted a actual figure of what. Changing the jail to a lockup facility, what that savings would be. And nobody had a calculator, nobody had the exact figure. And so we were kinda going between these numbers here. And there was a, originally it said four fifty, and then by looking at these numbers, there was a nine hundred thousand dollar difference. And that's, I believe, what Commissioner Simmons is talking about. With the various scenarios that were given to us. With these numbers at the bottom. So with changing the, i- is that your question? Is, what is the actual savings? Of changing the jail from the current running to just a lockup facility? Do we know that exact number?
My understanding was, what was said last meeting was nine hundred thousand. That's why I wasn't gonna pursue that millage. That was the only reason I wasn't gonna pursue it.
Comment.
Go ahead.
There's gonna be a difference in first year and following years also.
I understand.
There is, there is separation costs that, that's gonna incur in the first year, that will not occur in the, in the following years. To get the, yes, in order to have a budget, you're gonna have a set number within the budget. It's gonna be in print. But there are so many different variables put into this. We are using very liberal. Calculations for this, so that there is a cushion. Uh, built in. Uh, we're not trying to do this as thin as we possibly can. That would not be responsible to do that. So to just say that that's the number exactly, and that's gonna come out at the end of next year. I highly doubt it. I think it'll be, I, I think it'd be better than that, but. Uh, but there are some first year costs that will not occur later on. That's my, one of my points. That's it.
Anything to add to that? Where in our, where in our packet from, from last week are we looking at the exact savings? It should be somewhere under the.
If you're looking at the August thirteenth meeting, you wanna punch item five A.
Yep.
Which is the jail millage.
Got it, that's what I was looking at.
Resolution, and you've got the three scenarios. We're finally there. So the first one was, the millage were approved at the twenty twenty-four staffing levels, and you can see where the. Revenues and expenditures would lie. Uh, the next one is, again, we got the detail after that. The next one is scenario number two. Which would be staffing at the twenty twenty-three staffing level. And then scenario number three was the, uh, projection, should the millage be requested and then failed? What would that do to the overall, uh, general fund budget? And you can see that would have dropped the. Surplus from in the neighborhood of four hundred sixty thousand down to two hundred sixty thousand. Uh, for that, uh, first quarter of fiscal year twenty-five to continue the operation at status quo. Uh, if the number nine hundred thousand was spoken, it definitely was a mistake. I don't recall ever using that number. It's not one that's. Propped up in any of these scenarios. Uh, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'm saying I don't remember it.
It, 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 it did. I don't recall the exact conversation, but. Any other questions, Commissioner Simmons? Tim, did you have anything else to add to the report?
Um, just one other item. We did originally have the district court on the agenda for tonight. The court called yesterday, and so they still weren't ready. But they will be here at Committee of the Whole next week to go over, uh, proposal that they have for their budget, uh, some. Appending adjustments included. And I did wanna ask the board, just, uh, because we still have a couple of meetings. Are there any other departments specifically that you'd like to hear from that you haven't already heard from?
Commissioners?
Um, well, one point I wanna ask, next week is the fifth Thursday. Are we going to have a meeting? It won't be, so it'll be two weeks from now. Many, with the whole, uh, as far as another department, uh. Uh, when will the transit board meet next?
Uh, it'll be the third Thursday in September.
Okay, well, then, I think maybe later in the month. Maybe we could hear from transit as far as. I know that's not a general fund thing, but I know you got some decisions to make because of lack of millage, so. I'd just maybe like to hear about the special millage on that side of it. As far as a general fund, uh, as far as a general fund department, I don't know of one. If we're hearing from the courts, that's enough for me.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
Right now, I'm more fun.
Commissioner Simmons?
Um, I have a question to ask. My understanding is the MTA meeting is gonna be on the twenty-seventh, which is a Tuesday at six P M at Churchill Township, is that correct?
Correct.
I just wanna make sure it has all in the right place.
Would you like to see any department heads related to the budget? At the Committee of the Whole meeting?
I think, uh, the courts would be fine.
Okay, Commissioner Mahew?
Yeah, probably enough.
Elected officials, did you have anything else, Tim?
No.
I'm sorry. Elected officials and department heads, clerk?
Uh, Brett Gildner, Ogama County Clerk. Uh, I just got back from probably the most beneficial training that I have been to since I've taken office. Um, the Michigan Association of County Clerks. We meet three times a year. This one is our big one where, um. It's a couple days long. Uh, but. The topics that we were presented with were really informative and. If I haven't had enough changes with election law and anything to do with. Election, there's more coming. So, but overall, it was just, it was really good. Um, I was really happy that I was able to attend and. We got done with the canvas the Friday. I think we left the building. It was like quarter after five, but we were able to certify the election, um. Board of Cam, or State Board of Canvassers meet on August twenty-fourth is when they start. There was one person who filed for a recount. Uh, Coming Township Supervisor. Position will be recounted once the State Board of Canvassers have completed. Um, so I'm looking at that probably the beginning of September. That is it. We have, uh, three people so far who have filed for. Write-in for November. Another big election. That's it.
Elected officials, department heads in the room. Come on up. Didn't see you back there.
Sorry. By the way, this is for nine one one. We just covered it, so. Uh, we just don't, I don't wanna mess with it. We don't know what it is. We just don't want anybody. Hi, I'm Julie Darden, District Director, MSU Extension. Um, I haven't seen y'all in a while, but, um. We had a very successful fair, and once again, very strong partnership with the folks that are, um, leading. In the Ogama County Fair. Um, really excited about our continued collaboration and positive, um, efforts out there. Um, and, uh, in addition to that, and all the success that we saw that youth were demonstrating at the fair, um. We had our, um. Community nutrition instructor at the Rose City Summer Recreation Program in July. Um, helping youth understand how they can incorporate physical activity into their recreation program. And they actually calculated the distance that walking around the gym would create. Um, so it's not only about physical activity, but also math. Um, and, uh, they learned how long a lap was and how many laps they would need to, um, walk to create a mile. Um, and this, you know, we have some quotes from youth saying, you know, now I'm gonna walk with my friends, because I'll be able to keep track of how many miles I'm walking. Um, and that's a six-week program, uh, that the Rose City is running, but we were there in partnership with them. So it's another example of how we're adding value to things that are already great that are happening in the county. Um, in another effort, uh, working with the Commission on Aging. Uh, to deliver our Tai Chi for arthritis and falls prevention program, which works with older adults, um, on. You know, low-impact movement that can help them, you know, remain active and, um, maintain balance as they. As they're encountering life. Um, and it seems to be the time to talk about Rose City, because, um, Saturday. Uh, I will be at the Disaster Preparedness Expo. I was invited by Mike Bowers. Um, and his committee to be part of the Disaster Preparedness Expo. MSU Extension. Uh, does provide information about disaster recovery and preparedness. Um, is part of our educational programs. It's not something that we really highlight, but obviously, we have a lot of different areas in which we can have influence. So we'll be sharing information that we've developed about how to help youth, for example, cope with the emotions of. Uh, in the aftermath of a disaster, how to plan ahead if there's a disaster, how to recover financially. Um, both for farmers, homeowners. Um, and then there's the inevitable food safety questions, like, can I still eat? If I lose power, can I still eat all this food? Um, or in my house floods, can I still get the things that I canned and eat those? Um, so we provide information about all those things, and we'll be there at the Disaster Preparedness Expo. I did bring some copies of the flyer, cause I didn't know if y'all had seen that, and I haven't been able to attend every meeting, so you may have heard about this from Mike. And I apologize if it's a second time that you're hearing it. Um, and, uh, that's all I have today, so I'll just pass you around.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Any department heads or elected officials on the phone?
Yeah.
Uh, matters on the floor, Commissioners?
I have none.
Motion for adoption?
I have none.
Commissioners reports, Commissioner Wiltzy?
Uh, just, it was at EMS board meeting, uh, before our meeting today. Uh, today is the deadline. For the director applications.
Oh.
We did, uh, ten applications. Now, me and another board member, uh, we will be going through those and advising who we feel. Who should be interviewed, and that will, uh, go to the board, and within the next couple of weeks, we should have interviews set up. Um, they're short-staffed out there. We do have some team members, um, that are injured. So they're, makes them even more short-staffed, but morale's doing, uh, doing okay, and, uh, they're hanging in. Uh, Transit, we had our Transit meeting, uh, last week. Uh, Tony Dubay, our new Transit Director. He's, uh, he's coming along pretty well. He's really happy that Ray's still there. Um, he's learning a lot. A lot of the stuff is new to him. Um, you know, we have a very strong Transit Committee. Really looking forward to what, uh, what Mr. Dubay's gonna bring to the table out there as our Transit Director. Um, yes, he was discouraged of, like, starting off and the millage not passing. Um, he understands the importance of making sure that the day-to-day budget is run properly and. Um, administrator, administrated correctly. Um, he, him and Ray are working on, um, on a budget for that. So us committee members can work with him to also assist him. If he's, uh, you know, feeling a little nervous about something or just had any questions, so. We have a really good team out there. Um, we're gonna continue to stay in close contact with Tony, because it, it is a big position. And, um, this transition period is very important. Uh, not only for, uh, the riders of, of the Transit, our residents, but also for the team members out there. Uh, this past Monday, we had our Northern Commissioners meeting up in Roscommon. Um, I chose to, uh, join that via Zoom. Uh, another very beneficial meeting. It's just a great, great time to network with. With other counties. Um, a lot of counties up here in the north, you know, are also experiencing the issues that we have. Um, they financially aren't in the dire position that we are, but they're hurting, um, jail-wise. There's just a lot of different issues that, you know, I feel we can relate with a lot of these counties. And, uh, it's just kind of a really great time for that networking, um, and I'll make sure to continue to be consistent with those meetings. And then, um, this past Monday, then also, we had an EDC meeting, Ogama County EDC. Which we have our Vice President, Rich Castles, here tonight. Rich, nice to see you. Um, got some exciting workshops coming up, um, in the end of September. On September twenty-third, we have a QuickBooks workshop, um, and that is gonna be facilitated by. Andrea Franklin and Wylander Fitzgerald. So we're really looking forward to that, and that is for. Any business owners of the county or possible future business owners. Um, that is on six P M. At the EDC Building, which is Michigan Works, on the twenty-third of September. And then the following week, we have another, uh. Really informal workshop that's gonna be improving customer service. So that'll be on September thirtieth at six P M. Feel free to reach out if you guys have any questions for me on that, and then we're getting prepared for our Economic Outlift Breakfast. Which will be, um, on thirtieth of October. Ogama County EDC Board, we have a really strong board, a lot of smart people, real good visionaries. And, uh, a lot of good things going there, so. That's, that's all I have for tonight.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh, the only meeting I've been able to attend was the airport meetings yesterday afternoon. Our runway is in total reconstruction right now. Um, they're pretty much on schedule. Uh, they ran into a little bit. Thicker runway than with, that we originally thought we had. Uh, it, it appears that, uh, one time the runway was. Only thirty-five hundred feet long, rather than the five thousand feet that we have. So that, that portion of the runway ended up being about four, five inches thicker. So, in all, we got more material that we were able to, uh, eat. That we'll use later, probably for, uh, maybe, maybe for a perimeter road around the airport. But it's coming along very well. Uh, they may be repaving as soon as tomorrow. If not next week, uh, but we look to have it back open probably, um. September sixth, seventh, eighth, something like that, so.
Okay.
Yep, it's coming along good, and, and while, while I was there, the state police came in, two different helicopters and refueled. Uh, and bought, so the state bought fuel from us, so we made a little money while, with, even though the airplanes can't land. So, it was interesting. Uh, I, I, the first one came in, and I didn't, I wasn't out there. The second one came in, and two guys. Jumps out with weapons, strapped right on their chest. Oh, oh. I says, for real? Nah, we're just training. Okay. So, it was interesting anyway. Uh, financially, we're doing very well at the airport, and, uh, we'll be back on track as soon as, soon as the pavement's laid. That's, that's the only meetings I was able to attend lately.
Commissioner Mahew?
Well, I was at a couple townships in the city, and they weren't. Jumping at the idea of paying for building and zoning. Uh, the good news was that Rose City. And a couple of the townships are trying to, they're in talks right now with the. School Board, I guess, trying to do something with the Rose City School. They're talking about, like they did in Hale, they made a community center out of it. So, I mean, it, it's not, nothing's gonna happen tomorrow, but they're working on it.
Building and zoning, what did you mean there?
Pardon?
What did you, West Front Township, you said building and zoning?
Well, we was talking about it, trying to get the townships to pay for it. I asked them, they ain't willing. It's something that we're not, I guess, we don't have to have it. And they talked about getting the townships to pay for it. They ain't real hip on the idea.
Go ahead.
Yeah, there was a sheet put out. I don't know if I gave it through or not. It was, it was by um parcels of land, not same across the board. And it was just brought up for conversation. Because West French Township and Edward Township pays for their own zoning. Uh, the county doesn't pay for that.
Right.
And as far as building goes, building is self-supported. They don't pay for the building. So building is one, one section and zoning is another section. And I would hate to be without zoning because then anything would go, you know, anything would be put anywhere. They wouldn't have any zoning laws and our county wouldn't look too good.
Right, you could have a business next door to residential.
Or you could have the ghettos next door to a beautiful home. Yes.
Anything else? Commissioner Simmons?
Uh, no, I don't have anything, but I'd like to iterate on the, on the airport. Uh, I went out there with Ben and his vehicle one day. We drove all the way out there and I was watching them tear the different techniques they had to use because there is a gas line underneath that, that runway. And they couldn't take that part of the runway up. I was like, they did the rest of the runway. And the stuff that was under that runway, the netting and stuff that was under there, what it was used for and stuff. It was just real, real interesting watching them tear that up. So um, yeah, I thought it was, I'll be glad when it's done, but um they're really moving right along with that. I mean, they didn't waste any time tearing that up.
I, I didn't have any meetings since our previous meeting. Um, most of mine are in the first two weeks of the month, so your claims and I, I think, I don't think anything else I've attended.
Okay, I had a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Um, so I also met with um Chris for maintenance and our mechanical inspector. We've been a morning last week. Um, we spent probably about forty-five minutes together over in the mechanical room. Um, you know, taking a look at the current equipment and uh, just, just kind of talking about, you know, what we possibly could do to try to, you know, save some money. And Chris brought up some ideas and so did Craig. Craig's gonna look into a few options. We're gonna try to get um Honeywell um operates some of our system. Our system, of course, is pretty old. It's a lot of it still is analog. Um, but they've, Chris feels like there could be some savings on a couple of items, so of course we need to look into that. So uh, we'll continue to move forward um and hopefully get uh, you know, a professional here to look at exactly what we have and see if there's anything we can do immediately that would uh save us some money. Then I had a conversation with Brian Stein and he's gonna come talk to us regarding the front entrance, the handicap accessible. Um, and some of his suggestions and some concerns that he has. So I did ask him to try to get onto a meeting, a committee whole meeting as soon as possible. So that's just my report on that. And uh, one more thing. So next Thursday, we don't have, we don't have a meeting. But obviously we have a lot of important things going on right now with the budget, you know, only a month away and some other and hopefully hear back from Roscommon County uh beginning of this coming week. Would you guys entertain a meeting for next Thursday? We have negotiations all day on Thursday. On the twenty-ninth. A meeting would be at five-thirty. Negotiations would be over by then. I think by the time we're done with negotiations, that'd be pretty much done. And we just got a lot of, you know, some big things going on and where the deadline is. Well, that's meeting on Friday. Or a Wednesday.
If there is um, I guess between now and then, is there gonna be, is there any other meetings taking place that we will have? Obviously, hopefully we'll have some contact with Roscommon County, but is there anything else, any more information that could be or would be gathered between now and then?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of anything. It's been a fluid six weeks here though, so anything could happen, but right now I don't foresee anything new.
If, is it also a, a possibility to, if, if anything comes up that you could call, I mean, I'm up for a meeting, but I'm also up for a week off. Um, if there's nothing that's new between now and then, I wouldn't see a reason to meet. Are you gonna come out of negotiations with, with nothing probably concrete? It's just.
I would be stunned if we came out with a deal.
Leave open a slight possibility, I suppose, but um, I, I wouldn't surprised.
Anything new comes up, are, are you guys okay if he calls us to a meeting? You've been communicating, been receiving all the emails. I did want to give a shout out uh to the equalization department. They had that uh activity Monday night, the golfing for uh the county for overall morale and Commissioner Simmons and I uh golfed in that. Um, that was a very nice nice event that they held. And there was a lot of participants, so that was appreciated.
Go ahead. The golf was fun, very chaotic, because a lot of us didn't know how to play golf. But the most fun was when we socialized afterwards, uh where we were eating and stuff. I mean, there was a lot of fun just socializing and just talking about our own sort of, our own personal lives and and just funny things that have happened in our lives and stuff. It was, I really did enjoy that part the most. The socializing afterwards.
It was a lot of fun, so that was appreciated for that department. So what are you guys' thoughts on the meeting, I guess?
I'd like to have one, but.
Anybody, anybody else in favor of one? I am, if something pretty, concrete comes up. If, if not, I'm okay with paper.
I'll go with concrete too.
Okay.
I like concrete also.
Uh, general public comment. Sir, I think you, come on up. Do you know the rules? Come on, come on up, sir. Come on up, sir. I'll, I'll give them to you. Uh, they are, yeah. Say your name for the record, speak only to the chairperson, stand behind the podium when speaking, which you're fine right there. Uh, limit comments to three minutes or fewer and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Your name?
Mark C. S. Lake.
Did you, did you understand those rules?
Yeah, who's the chairperson? You? Okay, very.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Can you spell your name?
C. I. E. S. L. A. K. Mark, behind the podium, buddy.
No, he's fine. You're fine. You're fine. You're fine. We're happy to come to you.
I wanna be compliant here.
Yeah, have a seat, have a seat.
Just thank you. So everybody in the back in here, you're awesome.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for having me.
You had the floor.
Okay, very good. Uh, we have a very tense and controversial issue on hand at Lake Ogama. It's regarding short-term rentals. Uh, today I am seeking your help to better understand the county's position on short-term rentals in a residential area. Okay, uh, I have two series of questions. The first being, is there a county law or ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood? My understanding is that there is.
So I'm gonna direct you to Ryan Veder, our, our ordinance or our administrator. Now is basically the time for you to make a, a public statement for three minutes. Typically, we don't interact.
Okay, okay, okay. So can I make a statement in terms of a question?
Go ahead.
Okay, all right, I'll try. Uh, and this person, is this person online or that you just referred me to or?
Our, our zoning administrator?
Yes.
Um, he's not, but I can give you, we can give you his office contact information.
Perfect, okay. So then let's.
Hold on. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll present this in a rhetorical questions, okay, versus looking for feedback.
Okay.
Okay, so i- is there a county law ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals in a residential neighborhood? Rhetorical question, I'll ask that person. And if so, how is that enforced? I'll ask that question as well. Second, this is very brief. Uh, at Lake Ogama, there's Summer Dorf, which is a series of uh rentals that have been there for decades. Okay. And uh the question is, can those be, again rhetorical question, can those be separated from the discussion of the recent influx of Airbnbs and VRBOs? Could it be a separate issue? In other words, can Summer Dorf be grandfathered and separated from the recent rentals that we're having discussion with, Ron? Yeah, that's it. It's basically gonna be two separate issues.
Tim, do you have anything to add to that?
I would, again, just reiterate what the chair has already said, contacting Ryan Veder. Uh, and he would definitely be able to address things like grandfathering as far as the ordinance is concerned. Uh, but yeah, he's definitely the person that um is at the front of that, that type of issue.
Great, okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Ryan Veder's office is in this building.
Oh, perfect.
So I'm trying to, it's right down this hallway.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Hey, Rich.
Who?
What hat do you have on?
Consumers.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, no, EDC.
Go ahead, up, guys. We have someone that's gonna speak. Guys.
All right, good evening. I'm Rich Castle, Community Fair Manager for Consumers Energy. Uh, for those that don't know me, um, I'm based out of our Taos office, but cover eight counties here in the Northeast region and includes uh Ogama. And as mentioned, I sit on the EDC, I'm the vice chair, but uh, I'm here tonight. I believe in your packet, there is uh this document. This is uh talks about a reliability roadmap, so I wanted to chat about that. Some of you might have heard this already, but uh we had some pretty robust, robust goals uh that we're looking to achieve here as we move forward. And so really the first goal pertains to statewide uh storm outages, may not really apply much to Ogama County, but no single outage affects more than a hundred thousand customers. So uh, I think about it from a big picture standpoint. If we have a major storm comes through, that hundred thousand uh outage uh is really a threshold that really gets the Public Service Commission, gets a lot of uh people riled up because there's a lot of people that are out of power. So you know, to be able to try to limit that below a hundred thousand is pretty significant. And as you guys know, we've had some pretty bad storms here lately and we've reached that threshold. Our goal is to try to keep it below that. But the next goal is the one that really I feel impacts all of us uh here, at least especially in the northern part of the state, but all customers have power restored within a twenty-four hour time period. So we already meet that in many, many cases, but there are situations where, or there are areas within our region where we don't usually do that. And so that's really one of our prime focuses, is try to get everybody restored within twenty-four hours. And so you probably wondered, how are we gonna do that? Well, really what it comes down to is investing in new equipment. So we're looking at investing in fusing, which is gonna allow us to isolate these outages to the core area where the outage is really at. And then what that does is that allows us to backfeed the rest of the customers from a different circuit or even a different substation. So that's really one of our, one of our primary focuses and that's work that's going on currently right now. The other part of it is obviously we're investing more into tree trimming and making it um, um more uh often. And then the other part of it is, is we're physically going out reading the substations, we're rebuilding circuit. There's a lot of work that's planned here for the near future and, and specifically here in Ogama County, just this year alone. We are looking to invest over three million dollars. So if it doesn't get all spent this year, obviously that's gonna get pushed out into the next year, but there's a lot of work that's being planned. Not just here in Ogama, but our entire region. And so I want you all to be aware that, you know, we are investing into the system, wanting to make sure that things are uh more reliable for uh our customers. And so the only other thing I'll mention is we just recently announced our wildfire mitigation plan. Does not really impact Ogama a whole lot, but in the area where it would, it's probably up in the northwest corner, Foster Township area, even north of Rose City. Um, so if you go to the FEMA map for wildfire mitigation, um, the map color codes really where the, the key focus areas are for wildfires in Michigan and the northeast, northern part of the state is really the focus. And the red area or the, the, the most fire-prone area, and I think you all would understand this, is probably northern Roscommon, Crawford, and in Dos Gota County. And so with that, you know, we're looking to look into situations where we can help mitigate wildfires. So what that means is, is we're physically looking at undergrounding some of our circuits in some of these areas. And that goes along with our undergrounding pilot project that we're implementing right now. We started out at ten miles. We're actually looking at thirty-five miles now. That doesn't seem like a lot, but what I can tell you is, is when we are looking at some of the more problem-prone areas and probably some of the areas that are going to be the hardest to do, those are the areas that right now are a part of the pilot to make sure that we can move forward with this. So for example, the one that's in our area that was a part of the original ten-mile pilot was over in Taos and it was actually on the lake. And me physically going out there and looking at this, when you have landscaping, you have trees, you have driveways, you have, you know, uh uh, I, I mean, you can just imagine what's going on there. How can you take an above-ground system and put it underground? That's what we're working through, is try to figure out how you can do that in some of the worst areas. And so that is the, the basis for how we're moving forward. What I can tell you is, is I would expect more of this to happen. And when we do know where that's gonna happen, I'll try to be as, you know, transparent about that as possible. So a lot going on. I want to make, make you all aware of it. Um, as we know more, I will try to keep you all on the loop as I usually do. You know, whether it's tree trimming or if we have planned outages, you know, I give you guys those emails. So I'm open to any questions if you have any, but uh otherwise, uh, just thank you for having me here tonight.
Any questions for it? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, folks. Have a good one. Thanks, man.
Any other public comment? Come on up, sir. You first. Come on up, sir. You know the rules.
Uh, Dan Zofsky for Park Township. Just want to bring it to the board's attention. I don't know how many you guys have been asked about our sheriff's department and I've had a couple of meetings with him privately about some concerns and questions we have in our township. Last time Brian and I talked, I went to his office and I asked if he could attend our last meeting. He wasn't there. He should have been. We had pretty healthy meetings that we probably need to share up there. But anyway, the concerns we have, um, I need some answers and I'm sure you guys get questions about the sheriff's department. I think once in a while it'd be nice for them to attend our township meeting and maybe put some of the public uh questions, you know, to bed.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Steve Yuchas, Indianwood Trail Mills Township out in Lake Ogama.
How do you spell Yuchas?
I'm sorry?
How do you spell Yuchas?
What was I thinking? Y U C H A S Z.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I'd like to expand on what Mark uh, uh, discussed earlier with regard to the uh uh, the short-term rentals within our residential areas. We have a number of LLCs who have established these short-term rentals in the last few years. And it's creating a certain level of havoc on the lake with regard to the extra traffic, the noise. Um, invasive species, which we've tried to address through our bylaws at, at Resort Association. Uh, we're, we're no longer allowing them to bring their own personal clothes on the lake to try and avoid the invasive species. Hopefully, we're, we're out in front of that. Um, but it's creating a lot of hate and discontent on the lake. We have less than two and a half percent of the property owners own these short-term rentals and a number of them, not all, some of them, they're doing end runs around our association rules. And we have a separate entity called Summer Dorf in there, which is another short-term uh rental facility with about thirteen cabins in there. And they were, I think they were initially like fishing cabins, but they're using them to circumvent our bylaws as well. So bottom line was, we had a vote last March. The majority of the property owners want to address these short-term rentals and get them off the lake, just be done with it. It's a private lake. We built there for a reason. And to have these pseudo frat houses pop up alongside our homes has just been unacceptable. Just some of them have been really bad. So I have Ryan Veder's phone number, but we wanted to bring this to your attention. Chances are you're gonna hear about it because it's become something of a contentious issue out there. So I appreciate your, uh, your listening to us and uh, we will reach out to Ryan Veder. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Brendel. I was here last year. Um, and addressed the board about a few problems I was having on our lake. Um, I want to say to the commission, I appreciate you all being here and doing your job. And I think Tim does excellent job directing you. Um, some of the things they guys do right, you do very well. I'd like to see our board make decisions. We've put you here for a reason. Um, the, the taxpayers don't want to see more millages. They, they want to have the people we put here make decisions for us. That's why we put you here. So that's one comment I want to make to you all and just put it in your heads and and, you know, it's just my opinion, but that's why we put you here, for you guys to make decisions for us. Um, the other reason I just wanted to say, um, since I came here last October and spoke to you about uh the sheriff's patrol on our lake, that has improved. They've been on our lake three times this year. That's more than they were there for three years. So, um, it doesn't make me- So, um, it doesn't make me happy that the patrols are still on Lake Ogama every weekend. My tax dollars that I should see and all of the taxpayers should see on all their public lakes, the sheriff patrol should be on every public lake, not on a private lake at Lake Ogama every weekend. People from Lake Ogama may disagree, but it's a private lake. I can't go there. They can hire a private company to patrol their lake. Those tax dollars that we pay to have that sheriff department patrolling those lakes should be on every public lake every weekend. There's still things going on. Um, and there's still many things that can be done to alleviate the problems that are going on on these lakes. We got a lot of traffic on these lakes now that those other lakes down south are gone and they need to be taken care of. We have short-term rentals on our lake as well. So it's, it's crazy. Anyway, I wanna thank you for your time and I appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? In the room? Probably coming on the phone. Item 17, closed session to discuss collective bargaining unit under MCL 15.268. One C, there's not gonna be any business after this, correct? Just so everybody is aware. Someone wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion. We go into select, go into closed sessions and discuss, select a bargain from, under MCL 15.268.
Commissioner Scott, support from Christian Mayhew. Um, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All those votes building up that good rapport, ABC 12, those hacks are gonna blow it up.
Yeah, when he currently doesn't, oh, the history of, very camp.
You guys all can.
She made it. I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to come back in the open session.
Real couple.
Roger Mayhew.
Yeah.
Charles Welch.
Yes.
Brenda Seven.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion with support, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, we adjourned. Thanks.